Welcome, everyone. I wanted to let everybody know that we have two board members that are absent due to illness, Tom Leffler and Alex Wallace. We can start by approving the agenda with the amendments.
Madam President, I move that we approve the agenda with the following amendments. First, additional certified and classified personnel actions, item number E3. Add item F1, superintendent selection process. Add item G2, consider approval of new policy IIBGB online learning opportunities.
Motion by Laura.
Wait, I got one more. I would like to add.
Oh, yeah.
Item J2, for us to go into executive session for purposes of consultation with board legal counsel on matters which are privileged in the attorney-client relationship, which have discussed in this session, would waive that privilege in that the Board of Education -- and then move what is currently J2 to J3 if needed.
Question or second? Second? Any discussion?
I thought you were waiting.
All those in favor signal by raising your hand. Motion carries. All right, thank you. All right, public comments. Tim Livermore is here to visit with us about the Garden City High School Sugar Beet Newspaper. Welcome, Tim. Yep?
First of all, I want to thank everybody for letting me speak in front of you tonight. My name is Tim Livermore. As you said, I've been resident at Garden City for 28 years. I have three kids who have graduated from Garden City High School and one that's currently a junior at Garden City High School. Back in February, I was looking through -- I work for the city of Garden City in our recycling department. I saw Sugar Beet Newspaper, and that's what I want to talk about, the high school Sugar Beet Newspaper. Hadn't read that for several years and thought, I need to take a look at it. When I looked at it, I was shocked to see what I saw in the newspaper, that there was articles about the movie Fifty Shades of Grey in the high school newspaper promoting it. I've got it, copies I can give to you all, promoting the movie Fifty Shades of Grey and how it was a great movie, a romantic movie, a perfect romance and drama movie. The film is also exciting and adventurous and perfect for a typical date night or just a night out with friends. The movie is sure not to be a disappointment. So get your tickets today because this film is sure to sell out. And this is not a movie that is for kids, high school kids, surely not a great movie for adults either, but I was shocked to see that we were promoting this and that there was no oversight from the advisor at the high school to say, you know, that's probably not appropriate to have in our high school newspaper. Then I looked right next to it and saw the other movie that they had reviewed was The Boy Next Door, which is a movie about a high school teacher who has an affair with one of her students. And I thought, okay, who's our advisor on this? So I went to Mr. Morales, went and talked to him. He hadn't seen it in there, he hadn't really paid attention to it from what he told me, but he didn't believe it should be in there either. But he said Monty Mosher is the advisor on it and that he's had problems in the past with freedom of speech with him and that he would talk to him. Two days later, I saw him at parent-teacher conferences and Mr. Morales told me that he had talked to Monty and that Monty had said, you know, it's freedom of speech, kind of gave him the freedom of speech, song and dance, and that if I wanted to, here's two options I had. I could write an editorial and they'd put it in the newspaper of why it shouldn't be -- they shouldn't be promoting that movie in there, which is, I don't want to do that because I don't want to bring that up again and have it in the paper again, or I could come talk to his class about why it's not appropriate to put in there. I think as administrators, advisors, teachers, we should look out for the kids of what they're putting in. We can't allow the kids to just put in whatever they want to put in there and talk about. I know freedom of speech is there, but if they're allowed to put whatever they want in there, then maybe it's time for us to review whether we should have a high school newspaper. It's a great thing to have, but there are limits as to what you can talk about, and I think we'd all agree. You know, some people say, well, there's 17 to 18-year-olds going to high school and they can go to those movies, but there's also 14-year-olds going there that are freshmen. And we don't need to -- I would think, I'd want our kids to be able to go to school without having that stuff put in front of them. And especially in light, it sounded like the gal who wrote this maybe hadn't, probably hadn't seen the movie, just by the way she talked about it. But I'm thinking, it's promoting the movie, there's no way we should have that in there. And so I want to see what can be done to have better oversight on that. Now, I know coming up, Monty Mosher is, from what I understand, is not going to be a teacher there anymore, he's retiring, so we'll have a new advisor coming in. I hope we can start off on the right foot with that advisor and, you know, kind of set some guidelines for them as to what can be presented in the high school newspaper. So, and I know Mr. Carlin's going to be taking over as a superintendent, so hopefully he too can have some oversight. And I believe either you or Mr. Norby had some college editorial, worked for a newspaper in college or something, maybe it's Mr. Norby. Okay. So he's got some experience dealing with newspapers as well, what's appropriate, what's not. You know, if it was a college newspaper, I could see that a little better, but not a high school newspaper. And hopefully you all can have some oversight too to revisit this down the road and see if something's being, the stuff should be taken to take care of that and not have this come up again. I talked to several parents and they were shocked as well, getting that it was in there.
Thank you for your time, Tim, appreciate it.
I just say I'm a parent and I'm shocked as well.
Do you all want copies of what was in there?
I've seen it, thank you.
Thank you for letting me speak to you.
Yes, I appreciate your time, thank you for -- I'll take one since you got it. Yeah, thanks. Is there any correspondence? Okay, consent agenda.
I move that we approve the consent agenda as previously amended.
Oh, we have another one? I don't want to walk in front of this recording, so I'm -- yeah, thank you. Jennifer Stanley wants to visit with us about Engage New York.
First of all, thank you. I was going to wait until the next meeting when it was maybe on the agenda, but I thought I would kind of just throw it in your minds a little bit. I've served on the math committee and I experienced the Engage New York curriculum with my kids at school, and I'm not a big fan of it. And I just wanted to let you guys know that that was my opinion. I've looked at some of the data that was put together, I kind of felt like it was one-sided. I've talked to several teachers in K through six that even though they want to make it work, they've really struggled with it. And I guess as a parent and with the limited educational background I have and the research I've done, I feel like a lot of it's not developmentally appropriate. And even though it aligns with the Common Core standards, I don't know if it's the right kind of math for our kids. And I visited, I visited with some parents that also have those concerns. They feel like the homework, even though it's not sent home like it used to, kids are just spending hours on it when really it would be a problem. It should be a math problem, it shouldn't be that complicated. And I honestly believe that maybe we jumped into it too fast to align with those standards and maybe we should have looked at what we were doing before and seen how we could adapt that to meet those standards. And I just, I wanted to take a few minutes to just maybe put that in your head as you're thinking about it when it comes up to the next meeting and you make your recommendation. I know that the math coaches and the principals and even the teachers and Leanne has put a lot of time into it, but not all those people are sitting at home from the parent's standpoint and seeing what's happening. And just looking at how the in-classroom work does not necessarily correspond with the homework, it's a lot more complicated than it needs to be. And I know we have to change because that's what they're telling us from the state and national level, but I'm hoping we can maybe work together and find a better way to do that. So, yes, that's all I have in my impromptu statement. If any questions or want to, you know, give me some comments that maybe I didn't realize and changed my mind, that's okay too, I'm wrong sometimes, but I want to stand up for those kids. And I really feel like my kids have lost two years of math and that's hard to see. I don't want them to play catch-up later, so, and I don't want to see other kids have to do that either.
I want you to know we greatly appreciate your perspective as a parent, and I highly recommend you come next time when we visit this in more depth. And hopefully more of your questions and concerns could be answered, and if not, we'll address those again, so.
Well, thank you for letting us know. Thank you for letting me in.
Yeah, appreciate it. My wish is still on, David. Okay, is there a second to the approving the consent agenda by Jean? Any discussion? All those in favor signal by raising your hand. Motion carries.
Okay, unfinished business. Tonight I want to talk about the superintendent selection process. Just bear with me a second while I get this pulled up here. Just kind of a preface, the superintendent selection process was new and lengthy and a process that every one of the board learned a lot throughout, and I thought the community deserved to know a little bit more about all the steps that we took to ensure the process had all of the efforts put towards it that it deserved. So with that being said, I just kind of want to go through, this kind of sounds like a timeline, which it is, but the take-home messages, all the steps that were taken and the due diligence that was performed at all levels. So, just starting off, February 2nd, Dr. Atha's resignation, which was effective July 1st, was accepted by the board. On February 16th, the board decided to conduct a search to find the best possible candidate for the open position of superintendent. At that time, we also agreed to employ KASB to help us find the best possible candidates. February 19th, the open position was posted on KASB's website. From February 19th through March 1st, the survey link, both in English and Spanish, was available on our district's website. The results went directly to KASB for analysis. KASB used this information to identify suggested characteristics of our new superintendent. And I just kind of wanted to briefly talk about the results from that survey so that everybody kind of had an idea of what the take-home message was from the survey, which I think is very important. First of all, we had 506 respondents, 40% of which were teachers. And the three areas that we're focused on were the top, or were the personal qualities, leadership qualities, and experiences desired by the next superintendent. So I'm just going to briefly talk about the top three personal qualities respondents would like to see in our next superintendent, and they were as follows. Personal strength, do what's right regardless of circumstances, a kid's first personality, and to be approachable. The top three leadership qualities respondents would like to see were efficient manager of resources, understand and recognize diversity within the district, and to be able to advocate for school system at the state and federal level. The top three experiences desired by the next superintendent were experience with diverse socioeconomic demographics, experience with diverse race demographics, and experience with business and operations of school districts. Two critical issues were defined, budget and teachers. On February 24th, Laura and I were interviewed by K. Buth, and we discussed the search process and timeline. And at that time, we encouraged community members to complete the KASB survey to help us learn what the community would like to see from the next superintendent. On February 26th, brochures were sent out announcing the opening and giving details of the application process. We printed and mailed them from this office, however, KASB provided the mailing labels since they knew where the appropriate places were to send this information to capture the most visibility from potential candidates. On March 23rd, all completed applications were screened by a three-person team chaired by KASB's Dr. Brian Jordan. It began around 9:30 a.m. and was completed around 4:30 p.m. At 6 o'clock, the board met during a special meeting and executive session to review the candidates with Dr. Brian Jordan via Skype. The board received the entire application of all candidates. We discussed the team's top three suggestions based on who they thought would be the best fit in our district. During this meeting, we narrowed our search to the top two candidates. We also discussed a list of 48 suggested interview questions and narrowed the list to 18 questions that we felt best applied to our search in our district. We also added a few specific questions of our own. The questions were broken down into three categories, background and general philosophy, curriculum and instruction, and communication. There were specific questions covering both the critical issues identified in our community survey, budget, as well as teacher retention and recruitment. On March 27th, I assigned specific board members to ask each question and the list was sent to each board member. Generally speaking, the interviews were taken very seriously. We took careful consideration to try to duplicate the process as much as possible for each applicant. We followed KASB's suggested interview schedule, which included a public interview opportunity, which they recommended to be scheduled shortly prior to the interview with the board. We made careful consideration to spend the same amount of time with each candidate. The first two hours of the interview were conducted right here in this room, at the ESC boardroom, and consisted of the board asking the applicant all 18 questions. The final two hours consisted of dinner with the applicant, their spouse, and an invitation for the applicant to interview the board. Dr. Fred Dirksen was formally interviewed by all seven board members from 5:00 to 9:00 p.m. on Monday, March 30th. And Dr. Steve Carlin was also interviewed by all seven board members from 4:00 to 8:00 p.m. on Tuesday, March 31st. Both candidates were told at the end of their interview, we would be meeting on Thursday, April 2nd, to make our selection. On April 2nd, the board had a special meeting and went directly into executive session. All seven board members were in attendance. Each member discussed their thoughts and opinions of each candidate. Both candidates were notified of our decision. Subject to contract negotiation, the position of superintendent was offered to and accepted by Dr. Steve Carlin. The final step is contract negotiation. We are now in the process of completing this last step. So as you can tell, there was a lot that went into this process and a lot of time from this board as well as the community. We received a lot of input, which we greatly appreciate. Which leads me into an overdue opportunity to thank everybody who participated in this process. I want to start by thanking the community, especially those who completed the survey, contacted a board member, or attended either of the public interviews. I'd also like to thank the media for their accurate and timely reporting of the process and candidates. KASB deserves a big thank you for their time and guidance. Even in light of the current financial climate, we couldn't have afforded to do this job with justice without their contribution. Selecting a new superintendent is the single most important decision any Board of Education will make. In addition to that pressure, this was a new process to each and every one of us. We were not able to draw from any internal leadership from any other board member. With that being said, I'm extremely proud of how we worked as a team, committed extensive time and thought to the process, and identified with integrity the best candidate for superintendent for our district. Thank you.
Board, do you have anything to add?
I was just going to say, I thought it was noteworthy that we, as a board, working through the process, developed that relationship with both candidates, to the point that we even called the other candidate that same night as well, as a board. And I think that's noteworthy because I'm not sure we had to do that, but we certainly did have a very good discussion with the other candidate. And it wasn't an easy one because it wasn't an easy decision, but we followed through with that as well.
Good point, thanks, Mark. Paul?
I just wanted to add that the same day that we had the K. Buth interview, we were also scheduled, Gloria and I, to appear on BBS as well. Unfortunately, there was a death in someone's family, I can't remember whose now, maybe Mr., I don't remember. So that appearance was going to have to be rescheduled, but that was the same week as parent-teacher conferences. I believe I was in trial the next day, so I wasn't going to be able to appear, and we didn't know if that would work out anyway. And also due to the fact when the survey was going to be cut off, and then March 19th was the deadline for the applications, we decided that we weren't, there just wasn't enough time to be able to get onto BBS. And then I also wanted to mention with regard to why we narrowed it down to two, I think during our discussions with Dr. Jordan, there was just a huge gap between the two that were selected to interview and the third finalist that KASB presented. And I think because of that, we felt that it was best just to go with the two candidates that we did interview. I don't think this was a decision that anyone made lightly. You know, I, the night before after the candidate forum, I went to Old Chicago, my waiter was high school age, so I asked him, what do you want to see in the superintendent? Who do you think? Dr. Carlin, they would like more snow days. That was overwhelming. But even listening to the server and listening, you know, and I had to listen to that, obviously, he didn't know who I was, and then talking to other people, it was a difficult decision. But I'm glad that Dr. Carlin shined through with that and that we've selected him, and it was not taken lightly. And we understood our charge and we followed through with it and did what we believed to be the best interest of the school district. And I would like to offer my congratulations to you.
Yes, I would love to echo that. Congratulations. Can you just come over?
I thought it was a good process. You know, we work, we all have full-time jobs, and then to get off work and come and spend two, three hours here. I know all last week it was sleepless nights on Monday, Tuesday, we had a candidate forum on Wednesday, and then discussion, two, three hours on Thursday. Every night was, I was very restless, trying to make the best decision for our students, our schools, our principals, our parents, and, you know, I think we did the best job we can. I know it's easy to always look in from the outside and say, why didn't you do this? Why didn't you do that? And, you know, we did the best we could, and I'm proud of that process. So, did we make mistakes? I don't know, people would say we did. I think, I think we did the right thing, and I'm proud, I'm proud of what we did, so I, congratulations, Dr. Carlin.
Just to clarify again, I mentioned that KASB recommended the timeline and the itinerary for the day for both candidates. And that's, you know, we've heard some feedback that the public media and community interview process should have been held at a time when more teachers could have participated, but KASB was our source for recommending that time, so that's what we followed. In hindsight, we could have maybe done it later in the day, but it would have been, it would have had to have been done after dinner, which would have been, you know, eight or nine o'clock at night. I just, even in hindsight, I'm not sure we could have done it any more effectively in a different time. So, and I do feel a little bit better knowing that we did ask for community input on the survey, and community members have the freedom to ask, to contact us and give us their feedback as the process was going on, which a lot of people took advantage of, so, and I'm grateful for that, so.
I want to just add that we all learned in the process. It's unfortunate that if you can't just come into that process with that profound knowledge, you pretty much have to learn it by applying. But as a board, I think, you know, certainly we would be more equipped the next time, but hopefully it won't be a next time for our Skype.
Hey, may I hear that? Yeah.
Just to describe expectations.
One of the neat things was on April 2nd, when we met on that special meeting to make our decision, you know, we called Angie and Tim and the media and the press and said, hey, we have some news, would you like to come down? And they were here with it, and so they did a good job of efficiently getting information out to the community and the public, which we appreciate greatly, so. Okay, without any more discussion, let's move on to new business. Dr. Carlin, I think we've got some policies to review.
We do, we have two policies for your consideration tonight, and these are both for a first reading, so we're not asking for action, but we'll bring them back at the next meeting. The first one's policy, JBC on enrollment. You'll notice tonight that both these policies are marked with an asterisk, and we're recommending a slight variation on what KASB's recommendation is. Most of the changes that originated from KASB just deal with wording changes. There's quite a bit in the section on non-resident students. Again, that just kind of follows with our practice as well, being a little more specific about the criteria that can be used when we're evaluating the request from a non-resident student. On the second page, the section in assignment to a school building grade level or class, that had some changes recommended from KASB, and we're recommending the board stay with the language that we had in our existing policy. And that is the process that we follow, it's been working for us, and we think that it would be best to keep that in place. There are a few changes, language changes regarding credit. Probably the most significant one is the last sentence in that paragraph for online credit approval procedures after enrollment, see board policy IIBGB. That led us to the realization that the board had never adopted policy IIBGB, so that would be the second policy that we're asking you to consider tonight. So I'll jump to that one and then I'll take questions on either of them. Dr. Dennis, Mr. Ron, and myself reviewed this policy at length. The, Mr. Ron was involved because he probably deals with online credit more than anybody else in the district. And we felt, again, this is starved because we're making a change over KASB's language, but we felt it was important in that first sentence is our change, that it be understood that this policy only deal with credit for courses that are offered outside of USD 457. We have online credits that our kids are getting through E2020 at the high school and at the alternative high school. We also have our virtual school. We felt like the intent of this policy was to ensure the academic integrity of a course before we grant credit for it when it's coming from outside the district. So we made that amendment to clarify that, and I believe the rest, the rest was what was recommended, other than our language of our assistant superintendent, learning services would be the person that would ultimately have that approval authority, and we believe that's where that authority should rest, so. Those are the two policies. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to entertain them tonight, or if you want to call me at any time, if we don't hear from you, from board members, then we'll place these policies on the consent agenda at next, the next meeting.
Any questions? Thank you, Dr. Carlin.
Thank you, Dr. Carlin. Full and open discussion. Do you have any people who want to discuss at this time?
I have one thing, a quick. And of course, I left my flyers sitting on my desk. Tomorrow, Youth Entrepreneurs of Kansas is hosting what they call BizConnect, which is an opportunity for business leaders and business people to interact with our YEK kids who are juniors and seniors at the high school. It's my understanding that there's also going to be a discussion, I think kind of led by Tom Willis, who's the CEO of Conestoga with Cecil O'Brye, for the kids to listen to. Is that going to be at the Clarion? The networking portion starts at 5:30 and I believe at 6:00 will be the actual presentation. I believe some of our kids may also be finding out if they've won some scholarships as well. So it would be a great event if anyone else can be there. I will be going, someone I know is forcing me to go. So, but it's a great thing for our kids. I mean, even before my husband became the student alumni manager, I've always thought it was a great program for our kids. They've always, when they've come, they've always presented themselves extremely well when they've done presentations here, and it's a great program.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else? Okay. The next board of education meeting will take place on holiday, the 20th, at 6 o'clock p.m. in this room. I move that we move into executive session for a period of 20 minutes, starting at 6:35. For matters of employee or employee negotiations because of this matter were discussed in open session, it might jeopardize the resolution of the negotiation issues. And I would request that Doctors Carlin, Aetha, and Mr. Griswold be requested to come in for that session. Second, Dr. Tim. Any discussion? All those in favor, motion carries.